Okay, everyone, I'm gonna call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, April 28, 2020. If you'd all please join me in reciting the host-disabled participant screen saving. Mike, I have a flag to show.
Oh, Laura.
Okay.
We'll go.
I don't know why it won't let me now.
Is my screen the only one that froze?
Yeah, it looks like it.
I think we'll just have to do the pledge without the with the flagism.
Without the flag? Can't do the pledge without the flag. Okay, motion to strike item 111 from the agenda citing absence of an American flag. Can we can we make sure we can't get it get it on the screen? Well, I tried. I can't share my screen. Host-disabled participant screen sharing.
Look into.
Mike's power up.
Okay. No, no, we forgot to set it. That's, uh, sorry, we forgot to set it for having school screen sharing, so I can't go back in and redo that right now.
Okay, anyone have a flag? I don't think I have a flag in the basement here. Okay, we're gonna strike that.
Hey, Bill.
You got one? Okay.
Oh, there you go. There we go.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, nation, God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, Alan.
There you go.
All right. Let's see, we're gonna take a roll call now, even though I can see most of you, we're gonna do it for the record. Holly Bem?
I think she just might have hopped off because her screen was frozen.
Absent. Here we go back. David Boomey.
Present.
Aaron Levitt Smith.
Present.
Craig McCormack.
Here.
Alan Needham.
Here.
William Rice is present. Richard Cortez, absent. Julie Eaton.
Present.
Present. Sean Glenn.
Hello, here.
Present, okay, so.
Um, Bill, I'm present now again.
Okay, you're here? Okay, good.
Yes.
Okay, so we have all six regular members of the commission tonight, so there's no need to promote anyone from the alternate bench. But I do appreciate both Julie and Sean for being with us. And of course, as we've explained in the past, you know, your your participation here may be valuable in the future for meetings at some other time. So there is still a value for you to attend the meetings. Okay, roll call done. Next, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, April 14, 2020 meeting. Alan?
Yeah, I'd like to make I'd like to make a motion that we table the approval of the minutes from April 14. They need a little more work. And I think if we waited through it at this meeting, it would take quite a while, so I'd like to propose that we table it till the next meeting. We can always approve them then.
Okay, yeah, I'd say, you know, I didn't I didn't see him until this afternoon, so I need a little more time as well.
Okay.
So I'm in agreement, so would someone like to make a motion to postpone review of these minutes until the next meeting?
I still move.
Oh, did you do it, Alan?
I did, but it doesn't matter.
I misinterpreted that then.
Oh, that's okay. We need a second.
Second.
Okay, David seconded, and okay, so we had Holly who made the the motion, right? Okay, David seconded. We have any discussion? Um, Mike, would it be would it be, you know, allowable if I sent a markup to you just as a I have quite a few markups that would probably take a little too much time to explain here in the meeting?
Yeah. Why don't we do that?
Okay. And and anyone else, I presume, who has comments can do the same thing? Okay, so there's a motion to table the the discussion of the minutes until the next meeting. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of tabling the discussion on the approval of the minutes till next meeting, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries unanimously. We'll we'll take that up again, and I'm not sure if it's two weeks or three weeks now. Let me just make a couple notes here. Okay, Alan, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, next item, referral from the zoning commission. So this was the the application number 20-06, comprehensive rewrite and reorganization of the zoning regulations. Uh, Mike gave us kind of an introduction at the last meeting. Um, I've been starting to go through them. Mike, I think you added another document that more that gave more, uh, I think it's called the guidance document.
So I emailed the group today. It's a draft kind of outline. It goes over section by section, the new regulations, what is added to the regulations and where to find them if they're existing regs in the current regs. So, Bill, do you want me to go? Do you want to go through all the sections? How do you want to do this?
Well, um.
Can I have an opinion? I definitely think I definitely think we need to go over section by section.
Yeah.
For me, anyway, it'd be more beneficial to have me read through them before we do that, unless people want to hear it from Mike, and then when they read it, it kind of cements it for better discussion next time. Maybe that's better.
Mike, what's the what's the timing of the referral?
So the the public hearing is scheduled for May 18. You have a meeting on May 12, so you have time for to get your referral back to the zoning commission prior to the public hearing. So I think maybe, as Alan kind of indicated, if you want, we can go through the section. I can go through this outline as I provided you. If anyone has any questions off the bat based on what what I present, um, maybe I could try to answer those this evening. Otherwise, maybe you can the commission can have a ability with the outline, the new regs, kind of digest the changes.
Yeah.
Because it's it's a large document that's been changed. It's not just one or two change pages that have been modified in the on the regulations.
Okay, so you're referring to the draft zoning regulations guide?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, well, yeah, why don't you go ahead and then let's do it section by section.
Okay, so so the new if you go to the new regulations in section one, that's the purpose and enabling powers. In our existing regulations, this article one, it's basically outlines the statutory authority of the zoning commission when the regulations were first adopted in Simsbury and kind of why what's the intent of zoning? So that's not a change, but what we did was we kind of reworded and grouped the this section together so it read as an actual document versus it was kind of scattered in existing regulations. Section two, does anyone have any questions? Section one? Okay, section two has to deal with the zoning districts and the map, um, which is referred to in article two of the existing regulations. The one substantive change that were made in this section was, so the zoning map has a district. It's the R30 zoning districts, it's a single-family zoning district. It was it's an old district that, for some reason, was taken out of the regulations but never rezoned on the map. Um, the zoning commission kind of determined there were so many properties that it evolved that we put the R30 standards back in the regulations. And then section 2.2 and 2.2, 2.3 are carriers in the existing regulations, having to do with the determination of boundaries and the commission's power and interpreting their map. So, um, if anyone has any questions, just stop me. I'm gonna go to the next section.
Yep, we're here, yes.
Section three is the residential zoning district. So right now, your regs for this residential zoning districts in town are kind of scattered in several sections. Um, one section is is article seven, A and B, that has the permitted uses and especially permitted use the permitted uses in all zoning districts, permitted uses in the residential zoning districts, and especially permitted uses in zoning districts. And you also have the performance standards or lot design standards, lot area, et cetera, which are in article eight of the existing regulations, along with some other accessory standards that are kind of sprinkled throughout the regs. What we did was we took every standard that had to deal with the single-family zoning district and put it right into section section three. Um, so, for example, the zoning setbacks for all of the single-family zoning districts are now, instead of sitting in a table in another section, are with all the single-family residential standards. The the uses that are allowed, instead of having them listed on on pages based on, you know, this is a specially permitted versus as of right versus not allowed, what we did was we we put all these things into charts, because we felt that for ease of of reading the document and and explaining to the general public, it's either to use the doc, the chart format for the uses. So, um, that's where you see the charts illustrating uses. Now, in this section, there are a few new sections. One is location of accessory structures. The current regulations kind of lack detail on location, scale, height of accessory structures. So what we did was we drafted regulations that kind of now has say, now, how how big can a shed be um, versus the the total area of your home? Um, there's a building height now for accessory structures. Our current regs do not have a building height. Um, the building height is the primary structure, so you can build a shed up to 30 feet tall. Now you're limited to 15 feet, so a story and a half. And placement, uh, there was clarifications on the various different types of lots, whether it be corner lots, through lots, um, pie-shaped lots. The where you can place a accessory structure in existing regs is very difficult to explain to a homeowner, never mind for a homeowner to um, to get it on their own. So what we did was we kind of drafted, like I said, more comprehensive regulations, but made it in a way that reads that a homeowner can understand where can I put my shed on my house, am I at my property? The next section that's that's different is the
Question about that? Okay, so it used to be you had to be, what is it, 15 feet from the property line?
12 feet. Well, so if if the if the shed was less than 200 feet, it had a reduced setback of 12 feet. Now, we've increased it to, if the shed is less than 250 square feet, you have a separation of 10 feet from the from the property, provided it's located in the rear yard of the of the house. You got me?
Well, I'm glad it cost me $1,000 to move mine. I could have left it there. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions on accessory structures?
Are you grandfathering any, uh, if someone's shed now is not properly struck situated? Does it have to move, or is it grandfathered?
It would be grandfathered. So any anything that's built, it's it was, well, one of two things. If it's built and it's in existence for more than three years, and there wasn't a a action taken by the the town in through Superior Court, it would be considered grandfathered and or non-conforming. Um, the other is if a shed has been built in town and it's compliant to the current regulations, or it received a variance in the zoning board of appeals, it will be considered grandfathered and not subject to the current regulations. If this, these regulations will only apply to new construction. So the next new section has to deal with home occupations. There's two of them. One is a home-based business, the other is a home-based service business. The difference between the two is the home-based service business will have customers coming to the home, um, provided that lot can support the intensity of the use. The home-based business is kind of the business that you're operating an office at your house. There's little to no evidence that there's a business there. It's status quo, seven days a week. Um, it's allowed under the existing regs, but the problem is our regs are very vague on what is considered a home-based business versus a home occupation. What we did was we we kind of we kind of surveyed what exactly is the the traditional
Hold on, Mike. Hold on, Mike. We lost you. All right, Mike.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you you froze up for about 10 seconds.
Which part? What'd I leave off before I froze?
Uh, no definition of home business and not a good definition.
Yeah, so this this now we've clarified it, and we provided with some more safeguards for the surrounding area. Um, that that's really what a lot of our issues were. So, for example, retail sales will not be allowed in his home-based home service-based business, at least if there's no showroom. Um, there's a lot of other standards that are now measurable standards. It one of the themes that we were addressing was, we want to eliminate discretionary standards out of the zoning regulations. Our existing regs have a lot of discretionary zoning regulations, which do not provide the adequate regulatory uh, cover, you know, protection.
Regulatory protection. Mike, you froze up again.
At a bad time.
Going in now.
Mike.
Long. Yep.
Yeah, okay, so you froze up again. We heard regulatory something.
Protection.
Protection.
Okay. Um, next, next thing was the dimensional requirements. I think I already hit, I already discussed that that was moved into this regulation from article eight. Um, the other sections that were added to this were the existing design cluster development and single-family open space cluster zones. Those sat in article 10. They're they're actually residential zoning districts. Uh, we moved this these regulations into this just for ease of all the all the residential standards are together.
Okay, understood.
Uh, the next section is section four, the business districts. Um, this section really, it has to deal with the B1.
Mike, I'm sorry, because with with the cutting, you moved. Can you just repeat that last thing? What did you move into section three?
Uh, the design cluster development regulations and single-family open space cluster zone regulations.
Okay, yep, thank you.
So, and that was mainly to for ease of, you know, like I said, that all the single-family zoning regulations are together. The next is section four, having to do with the business districts. This is the B1, B2, and B3 and PO zoning districts. The only really change here is similar to the residential district. The uses now, instead of being listed, are in chart form, along with how they are allowed in each zoning district, either by by as of right or special permit. Uh, the same thing in section five, having to do with the industrial zoning districts, I1 and I2. Um, as I said earlier, the there used to be an I3 zoning district that is no longer in the regulations. We took that district out. That's the earth excavation zone. There was only two properties that were zoned I3 in town. One is Dorset Crossing, because it was used to be the old sand and gravel pit for the state. And the other is the Kitchener Quarry on Quarry Road, which is open space, so that we're gonna rezone that property to residential. Next section is section six that has to do with the floodplain zone. No changes have been made to this this section from the existing regulations. This is all this is located in article seven, section M of your current regs. Um, as you maybe remember, we we updated these regs
Uh huh.
About two year, two years ago, I think now um, to meet FEMA's current requirements. But like I said, there's been no changes to this. Um, section seven, having to do with non-conforming lots, uses, and structures. There was one change that we made in this section. We eliminated the, uh, there was some, uh, time sunset clauses in this section, which are not allowed under state law anymore and by case law. So it was kind of a, to keep that section legal, we had to take that out. Um, the next section is section eight. This is the special regulations. So in this section, you have the planned area development regs, the housing opportunity zone, assisted living and congregant senior housing, all of which are in the existing regs. No changes have been made. The workforce overly housing zone remains in the zoning regulations. However, there was a change made to this. We made a change that requires that such a parcel for an application made to the WAS has to be within 850 feet of Hop Meadow Street. So we're right now on the existing regs.
Can I, I I hear talking that's not you. I don't know if whoever, if they can mute, because it's, um, I am not sure where it's coming from, but it, um, it's starting to get a little louder for me, so I don't know if anybody else hears it.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, so Mike, you're saying that in future, if this goes through, that workforce housing zones have to be within 850 feet of Hop Meadow?
Yeah. Yeah, so.
While I got your ear, but zoning does intend to address PADs in the future, rewrite?
That's our next project.
Okay, is that next project like five years from now or soon?
Like when we get this this this, uh, adopted, we start on PAD. We didn't want to do that. We we didn't want to work on the start the PAD regulations as we were doing this comprehensive reorganization, because that's a large conversation, and we didn't want this to get sidetracked in that discussion. So but that's that's on their agenda, and that's 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 been one of my marching orders was, when we're done with this, we start PAD.
Good, makes sense.
So so get back workforce overly housing zone, um, the 850 feet. Uh, basically, the the example to be is, um, Cambridge Crossing on Hoskins, that's 850 feet from Hop Meadow Street. So that's the furthest away you can get from Hop Meadow to land a WAS. And we used the when we were discussing this, we one of the things the zoning commission discussed was, you know, through the other application, one of the main complaints everyone had was, this thing can land everywhere. We thought it was only going to land near a state road, not in someone's backyard in a single-family zoning district. So what we discussed was, how do you develop a criteria that, one, we didn't want to create a non-conformity with the current approved WAS that we had, but more importantly, how do we get it so it's close enough to Hot Meadows that it's not all over the town? So that that's how that number 850 was chosen for the locating this district.
I'd I'd like to point out, there's a lot of backyards within 850 feet of Hop Meadow.
Agreed.
Any was there any consideration to having different distances depending on the character of neighborhoods?
No, they went with, they wanted to do a just a hard number, and the 850, like I said, was really based on the existing approval. And where was the existing pad, I mean, the pad, I'm sorry, the WAS located?
Wow. Hey, Mike, I've got a question. Um, a few years ago, we saw, um, proposal to develop um, that, um, that area off of Iron Horse Boulevard, um, that's owned by a company that has gravel and other things in it right now. Um, are they more than 850 feet away from Hop Meadow, or do you know that?
No, they're they're, well, they're in the Simsbury Center code, so they they're under a different regulation to begin with, which has a higher yield, uh, uh, yield of units versus the the workforce overly housing zone actually has a limit on the number house, number of residential units you can build on a on a property versus the Simsbury Center code is, it's an urban code, it's a denser code. Um, so it's kind of, that's a little different that that particular.
Mike? To Alan's point, was there any discussion about changing the distance and then making an exception for existing pads? Do you know what I mean? Like, okay, so that was approved, but you know, why make it 850 if
You were.
people were being grandfathered in? Is that right? Is
Well, there's
I mean, that's that's a good point. You could make that exception, but but not to 850 feet.
But there's only one workforce housing approved in town, correct? That's Cambridge Cross. So my my point is, 850 feet up there is a very different story than 850 feet uh, by Fitzgerald's or on the southern part of town. I'm not sure why it has to be 850 feet for the whole length of Route 10 in Simsberg. Why couldn't it be 300 feet in some parts?
Yeah, so.
My problem with that. And it goes to P O C D to preservation of neighborhoods.
Yeah, one of the one of the other reasons why, um, why we didn't just take the position of let the let let that become grandfathered or non-conforming was from a, um, a financing standpoint. Um, once we, if we were to create that project non-conforming, it becomes a major headache for
That's not what I'm asking for.
Mr. Fregno, so that that was one of the discussions that was had by the zoning commission, why? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's that's not really what I'm saying. I'm saying 850 feet to accommodate Cambridge, I don't have a particular problem with that. I mean, a deal's a deal, okay? But why does it that mean that it has to be 850 feet, uh, for the rest of the town? Why does it have to be 850 feet for Weetalk or or by First Church?
Good point. Good point.
Why can't it be 850 feet in a in an appropriate area, 400 feet maybe? I just made that number up in another area and 100 feet in another. If you're trying to put workforce housing, if you're trying to keep it out of residential neighborhoods because of the effect, then where there are existing residential neighborhoods, the distance should be much less.
I agree, Alan. I I don't think it should be 850 to accommodate that one.
For the whole length of the road.
Exactly, exactly.
I'm I'm sorry, Alan.
Yep.
Okay.
He's cutting me off.
No, I think he agrees with you. That's a good point.
I agreed with you. I agreed with you.
It bothers me in terms of the excuse to do that is the preservation of neighborhoods, is to put it close to Route 10. Then preserve them all. Preserve existing neighborhoods. Up there, I'm thinking 850 feet, because it's so commercial, that that doesn't seem like a problem to me. I don't think neighbors would have a problem with that, but there are parts of town where 850 feet would go a long way up Old Meadow Plain Road, up Lattimer Lane.
Yep.
There's a lot of houses there.
Yep.
Hazel Meadow, all that would be included. I I just
Good point, Alan. Very good point.
I tell you, I'm gonna have a problem with that. That that means, uh, I I can't I, I can't see any reason in the world why you can't have varying distances, distances in, in varying parts of town along Route ten. Okay, you talking, Bill?
Got to get off mute. Okay, yeah, the um, the eight fifty, as I understand it, was to accommodate uh Cambridge Crossing. And you're right, why should we just draw a line, two lines parallel with Route ten, eight hundred and fifty feet on either side of it, right?
For the whole length of Route ten.
Yeah.
Have it eight hundred and fifty feet to accommodate them, because like I said, a deal's a deal, okay? And I, I'm just making this up about any thought, but from the Granby line, perhaps as far as. I don't know, little Westminster, make it eight hundred and fifty feet, Nick. I'm not sure I can defend that, but.
Yeah, I think that's the problem, uh, uh, what, 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 what measure or what standard are we going to use to suggest something else?
Oh, I think it's easy, I think that you look for existing um neighborhoods um along the road, okay? Even if it's, even if it's just. A quarter mile long, you say except there, well, you, maybe you could write the rec, now I haven't thought about this, but maybe you could write the regs. Uh, where there's a um. A neighborhood, an existing neighborhood, it won't be eight hundred and fifty feet, because you could just devour that neighborhood with, with this. There, there's a lot of.
Would be any areas left that you could?
Okay, but is there, is there anything, anything with it that, that is inconsistent? Okay, so you're saying it's not preserving the character of, of the town?
I'm saying, I'm saying it's not. That it's not preserving neighborhoods, which is exactly what it says. So, and yet the excuse to do this was to preserve neighborhoods, to limit workforce housing along Route ten. To preserve neighborhoods that aren't along Route ten, well, that's fine, but the, the neighborhoods that exist along Route ten. Uh, should be preserved just as much.
I'm not sure how, how, you know.
We don't have to write the regulation, we can just say that it has a problem. But I think you could write it, I really think, I think you could look at a map. And say, here's an existing neighborhood that's just as much as a, a neighborhood as one in West Simsbury or some other place, okay? It begins here and it ends there, along that stretch of Route ten, the regs are different. And here's an area where it's much more like where Cambridge Crossing is and, and there, it's a different number. I thi- I think that can be written, I don't see why that's so difficult, it's pretty easy to recognize a neighborhood, you just look at it.
Hmm.
But you think, point, you want to look at it and see what it's been, what people bought there, they bought a house in a neighborhood. And just like the people whose property you're protecting in other parts of town.
So Mike, how do, how do we give the feedback, we have to come up with a uh. A document. Part, you know, the referral document.
So you can comment, you could break this out on, on individual sections that are changed and say, this is consistent. This is where, you know, we could say, in general, we feel the, the changes are consistent with the P O C D. But in the following sections, we would, we'd like you to consider, we don't feel that the proposal is consistent with the P O C D. And we'd like you to consider changes and here's why. Um, you know, kind of what Alan, what you said, think of either. A difference, a hierarchy in. In uh, uh, setback requirements for, for the distance from, from uh Hop Meadow Street. Or just say, where it has frontage on Hop Meadow Street and that's, that's it.
Now I'm going to have a little problem with that too. Because we'd like you to consider isn't strong enough language. Because they're going to say, okay, I considered it, nope, we're going to leave it the way it is. So then, this thing is either consistent with the goals and objectives of the P O C D or it isn't. So if we're saying it's not consistent, what the hell did we vote for it for? I mean, that's our function. And I think this, this, to me, that's my vote, I just have one, but I would vote against the whole thing for that. Because I think it's that important, I think it's that in your face. And it's wrongheaded, as I've said, to protect some neighborhoods and ignore others. I remember there was a commissioner once before your guys' time, any of you. And he was talking about a part of town. And uh, they were talking about certain protections here and there, and somebody brought up that part of town, he said, there's nothing there but some condos. But people live in condos, okay? People with the same rights, exactly the same rights as a six thousand square foot house up on the mountain.
Well, and maybe, I, I don't know, um, how, how, you know. It could ultimately end up, but maybe, maybe we should say they shouldn't change the uh, the, where the workforce housing overlay zone can go. And it applies equally to everybody.
I hate to penalize twenty thousand people to protect five, I think you can protect twenty five thousand people.
But I, I, what, what, I, I, maybe I don't understand what this eight hundred and fifty foot. Uh, line.
It's a big number. You know?
But now it's all over town.
That's right, so.
Yeah.
Change the regulation, but change it so it protects as many neighborhoods as possible, this deliberately ignores a bunch of them.
Well, it, it, the, the eight hundred and fifty foot is not to protect the neighborhood, it's to accommodate a new development.
Well, no, this was just sold to us as an idea in order to protect neighborhoods in parts of town. That don't want workforce housing, we're going to say the only place you can put workforce housing is along Route ten. You can't put it in, I'm not going to pick on West Simsbury, but you can't put it in West Simsbury. Why? To protect the neighborhoods of West Simsbury, I'm, I'm all for that, that makes sense to me. And you're only accommodating workforce housing along Route ten, I don't have a real problem with that. But I'm just saying that the, the uh eight hundred and fifty feet is much less appropriate on some stretches than others. And you can write that, I don't see where that's so tough.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I, I, I don't think it's appropriate anywhere.
Well. Okay. I, I think I would like to protect the neighborhoods in, in.
Okay, well, if you want to do that, then we, then we, you know, we have to go to the other end of the spectrum. And not allow workforce housing overlay zone, which is illegal.
Well, then, you don't have to do that, if it's illegal, you can't do it, so that's not a rational choice. That there's a rational choice available, and that is to vary the distance according to the character of what's on Route ten.
Yeah, but that, that's all subjective, you know, you have no doubt, you'll s- step on someone's toes.
Well, you're stepping on toes now.
I know.
Stepping on the toes of hundreds, for all I know, a couple thousand homeowners.
All right, I'm going to agree to uh disagree with you, Alan.
Well, that's not the first, no, it won't be the last, well.
Um, I have a question, sorry, I'm still like catching up on all the language and everything, of course, but can you define for me what workforce housing is exactly in this? Document?
It's a housing that's available to individuals that make eighty percent or less the area meaning income.
So it's the same as affordable housing, basically then?
It's less stringent on the town.
Yeah. It's, it's like the friendly version of an eight thirty G.
Good.
That's the only way to. No, I, if you really think of it, you know, your, the eight thirty G application that you dealt with. Was a result of a workforce ho- overlay housing application that was denied.
Yeah.
So.
So, Bill, Bill, what do you, what are, I'm not sure what you're disagreeing with. With Alan, are you disagreeing about his whole premise or I, I wasn't, I'm not clear?
Uh, I have two, two points, one, I don't think there should be a uh, a boundary. Okay, wh- why, why is, yeah, unless somebody said, look, where's for workforce housing overlay zone should be located such that it's close to public transportation. Okay, the, the bus goes up and down Hop Meadow Street, nowhere else. Okay, but to say, we're going to, we're going to put an eight hundred and fifty foot. Limit from Hop Meadow Street to land a workforce housing overlay zone. So some guy in West Simsbury doesn't get ticked off that, you know, an application comes in at a property next to his. That doesn't seem very fair to me.
But aren't we trying to accommodate Cambridge Crossing, aren't we, didn't Mike say that we're in kind of a ticklish spot? If we don't include them in the uh. Number in the foot?
That's correct.
So the eight hundred, that's what, that's what, my point is eight fifty was out of convenience. Okay, and rather than try to make a meandering line up and down Hop Meadow Street. You know, trying to put particular protection on the certain uh neighborhoods. They just said, hey, we're going to draw this big broad, you know, take a broad brush approach to it. And it just so happens that, to um. Uh, uh, not impinge on Cambridge Crossing.
You know, Bill, there's meandering lines now.
Yeah.
Okay, the distance from the front of my house to the road, I, I'm guessing is probably the same at your house and mine, but it isn't in the center zone. The center zone was deliberately written where you were, what is it, Mike, fifteen feet off the sidewalk? That's a meandering line, why? To accommodate the nature and character of that part of town.
Mm-hmm.
That's not a new idea to have a meandering line. I mean, it isn't meandering like this, you know, I mean, there's some, some thought to it. I get, you know, I, I've said it three times, but to. Accommodate a current developer, I don't have a real issue with that, okay? But I'm saying, if the excuse is to protect neighborhoods, then do it. But protect all of them.
Yeah, but yeah. But we're not gonna, some will be impinged on.
But, what do you mean, we're not gonna, you, we won't if we stick with eight hundred and fifty feet?
No, I guess, I guess you could go to some places on Hop Meadow Street, you know, like uh near Ensign Bickford. And you, and you, and just say you can't put workforce housing overlay zone anywhere there. Because everything's so, you know, so tightly packed, or the nature, the, the neighborhood.
Sign Bickford and put it there, and the heck with the neighbors across the street.
I, I didn't catch the first part, Alan.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is. You, you know, Ensign Bickford is there in twenty twenty, I don't know about twenty forty, they could tear it down and put workforce housing there.
Yeah.
They could, so. But to build it now.
No, no, I meant, I meant across the street in the residential area, the Ensign Bickford houses.
The factory itself, you mean?
Right, no, yeah, where those.
Ensign Bickford houses.
It's very densely developed, you know, and.
And it's a cool little neighborhood.
Okay, and then, so we don't want to.
It has historic value.
But we don't want to put workforce housing overlay zone there, so you bring that line right up to Hop Meadow Street, zero feet from Hop Meadow Street.
Maybe. Maybe, well, then why not Old Farms Road put it? Okay, I mean, there's some nice houses there, we just up there today, there's some nice houses up there. But it's zero line now.
All right, Mike, uh, I think we're going to have to keep moving here.
Yeah. So, there's one section I forgot to put in the outline here, um, so this is new to the regs. We, the zoning commission developed agrotourism regulations. Um, this was in reaction to some of our agricultural businesses in town. And the activities that are occurring there, which currently are not allowed under the regulations. Um, it out, it outlines what's considered a non-ag event and ag events. Ag events are stuff that'll be allowed as of right, non-ag events are the, subject to uh, site plan approval. And it's on page seventy two and seventy three of the proposed regulations. Um, the next section is section nine. Is the sign regulations, which are in Article ten C, no changes were made to this section yet. Um, we will be changing this, that, this, these regulations. Uh, due to a recent Supreme Court case, but we are not tackling it with this application, this uh reg amendment. The next section, section ten, the parking standards, no changes were made to the parking standards from the existing regs. These are in Article ten E and F, section eleven is site plan approval. Um, there's been, this section right now is in Article five J of these existing regulations. Um, we really beefed up this section to uh. Really show what information is required in order for the, the commission to make a. Uh, sound decision. Um, we also had to add a few sections that were requirements of our stormwater permit with the state. For example, stormwater management is now required for all um, uh. Site plan approvals, there, there are standards they have to meet, or there are, there are exceptions that be grant, that can be granted in very specific. Uh, requirement, uh, standards. Like I said, this is part of our MS four, just stormwater state permit, we have to put these regulations in. The next one is soil erosion sediment control, erosion sediment control. Is, is a power that's delegated to the zoning commission by statute. And the zoning commission under MS four permit is required to have uh, uh, erosion sediment control. Standards in their regulations, so this is one that we had to put in. Right now, the current zoning regulations do not have E N S standards. Um, the next was minor changes in use or structure additions. So what the zoning commission provided is uh, an avenue now in the non-residential zoning districts. Where you have a use, uh, you have a site that contains a use. That's allowed as of right, and the owner wants to change the business to another business that's allowed as of right. Staff now provided, it's, there's no exterior expansions, or if there's an expansion to the um. Uh, building that it's less than fifteen thousand, uh, fifteen uh percent of the gross floor area or a thousand square feet. Uh, staff can sign off on those changes. Um, the, that change was in there to accommodate business to say, you know, here's.
Oh, lost your mic.
Yep, we lost your mic.
Mike, you're muted.
Exception requirements, they are in, right now, uh, special exception requirements in Article seven, section C ten. Um, these are very discretionary, vague, and do not have really the teeth uh for special exceptions. These new standards are really formalize the process, provide measurable standards, which the commission does not have right now. And um, you know, it, it, it will put, it'll provide for more orderly development following these standards. Um, the next section, section thirteen. Um, is a text management a- application, which is in Article thirteen of the existing regs. No change has been made, made to that. Uh, section fourteen, zone change, same, same thing, this is carryover from the existing regs. In Article thirteen, no changes are made to that section. Uh, next is uh, section fifteen, this is a completely new section, having to deal with administrative permit applications. By statute, uh, a zoning sign off is required if you change or modify a building, use, et cetera. Um, we've been requiring administrative zoning permits the entire time I've been here. Um, so this is really formalizing what we're doing and we're putting in the regulations. And following statute, more importantly. Uh, next is our, is section sixteen, the zoning board of appeals section. No changes have been made to that section. Last is uh, section seventeen, that's the adminis- administration and definitions. Uh, definitions are located in existing Article four of the current regulations. Basically, we moved all those re- definitions to the, to the end of the document. They were kind of buried in the middle of the document, and we felt that it would make sense to have it at the end. What we also did, we went through, our current townwide zoning regulations contain definitions. Which are specific to the Simsbury Center Code reg- regulations, we took out the Simsbury Center Code regulations. So those are going to go back into the Simsbury Center Code where they belong. Because some of them have caused confusion, and in particular, there's one that has caused a court case uh due to the discrepancy between these regulations. We also put in regu- uh, definitions for some of the new uh uses in there, such as agrotourism, non-ag and ag events. Home-based business, home-based service business, those are some of the new definitions that are in there. That's just a, that's just a supplement that, that list that I provided the commission at the last meeting.
I uh, ask for a couple details, you mind, Bill? I uh ask for a couple of details. You mind, Bill?
Yeah, go ahead, Alan.
All right, so all I had, I picked apart at this for a few hours. The uh all I had to work with was the uh first document that was on Dropbox, the regulation cheat sheet. So I had to kind of hunt and track to find out what that uh, where that was. So just, just a couple of questions occurred to me. I don't know if you have it in front of you, but under old regulations, items removed. Something that's removed is non-conforming lot prior to nineteen fifty-seven language regarded reduction setbacks. Anyway, if you look at that, that properties that were laid out, I'll call it, prior to nineteen fifty-seven were allowed a twenty-five-foot side set in areas that now require a forty-foot side set. So what I'm concerned about is, is that still going to be the case? If you remove that from the regulations, are those people um stuck with a forty-foot side set now? And will they be like legally non-conforming? How does that work?
So, so if they're within the setback right now, and the, and the regulations changed, there, there's obviously the subject of current. Yep.
Twenty-five.
They would be. Um, it would be dependent on the zoning district, because it's, it that. Use my regs. That reg has a hierarchy based on the zoning district. Just bear with me, I'll get to the page. So in the R one sixty, the R eighty and the R forty zoning district, the side yard is twenty-five feet. The existing setback is forty. The R twenty-five is reduced to fifteen. And the R fifteen, which is fif- uh fifty, uh twelve feet, sorry, is reduced to eight feet. And the R twenty-five distant side yard setback is fifteen feet.
So, but my question is, if you um, when, when this says that the lot prior to nineteen fifty-seven, you mean when it was subdivided, for example, and property lines established?
Correct.
So if you bought a house in uh I don't know, if you bought a house where the lot was laid out in nineteen fifty-seven, your side set is twenty-five feet. Is that only for existing structures, or is that for any structures you add on a garage or whatever?
Adding on to.
Adding on to. Okay, so if you remove this from the language, we're changing their side sets to forty feet? If you're in an R forty zone.
Correct.
You are. So now we got a whole boatload of legally non-conforming properties. Why are we taking this out of the regulations? Why are we doing this to these people?
Uh.
Why are we doing this to me? I think this is me. I'm not sure, but it's possible.
Yeah. We, we actually had some issues with this, uh, some enforcement cases and, and court case, so that's why this is coming out.
Yeah. Hmm. Just seems like a bed of snakes to me. Anybody else think that? Maybe it's just.
Mike, Mike, can you, can you um kind of repeat the details? Well, what's, what section is that in?
Uh, right now, it's in. Sorry. The existing regs. It is on page eighty-three of the existing regs. It's Article eight, section B eight.
And how about the proposed? I, I have the proposed um regulations open.
So that's, that's out of the, that's not in the. Yep. It's been removed.
Okay, Alan, what, what, what was it?
So my question is, so that you own a house and you think your side set is twenty-five feet, your side yard, now it's forty. It's, it's quite a change.
That, that is a big change.
That's a big change, and it means that part of what you've done over the years that was perfectly legal, okay? Um, is now legally non-conforming. And when you go to sell your house, I just want to make sure that some jerk at the bank doesn't say, wait a minute, what's this?
Okay, so now I'm really confused. Yeah, it, it, something existed in the uh, the existing regulations.
Yep.
What, what is that?
That allowed you for, if your lot was laid out prior to nineteen fifty-seven, prior to nineteen fifty-eight, it looks like, uh, that you got a twenty-five-foot side yard. And all these years throughout, all the owners, you had a twenty-five-foot side yard, or at least the ability to have a twenty-five-foot side yard. Okay, so you might have put up, I did, you might have put up a garage, okay?
Yeah.
It's legal with twenty-five feet, but at forty feet, I don't know if it is or isn't.
But so the person who, the person who built their house in nineteen eighty-five, they had the, they had the forty feet.
No, they had twenty-five, right? Right, Mike?
They had the ability to go to twenty-five, the reduction. Yeah, but like I said, and this came out, like, it was related to an enforcement case and court case. That's why this came out.
Correct. Well, there's no such thing as, well, grandfathering is the exact same thing as leaving the regulation the way it is. I just think you're changing the side set on a, the regulation problem, I don't understand. I don't have the facts. I'll just take your word for it. Um, you're changing people's side sets with no warning. All of a sudden, boom.
Okay, I'm, I'm still, okay, I, I'll have to look back at the existing, because I, I'm looking at the new, the other proposed regulations for dimensional requirements, section three point nine.
Yeah.
Okay? Um, and is that what, the, the equivalent of what we're talking about? This is setbacks, you know?
There was, in the current regulations, apparently, um, it says that if your lot was laid out prior to July nineteen fifty-seven, you had a twenty-five-foot side yard, and that's still the case. You have a twenty-five-foot side yard, even if your house was built last year.
Well, okay.
Now we're changing all of those to forty because we're taking the language that allows that out of the regulations.
But, but the, the setback depends on the, on the lot size? On the zoning.
It depends on the zoning district the property is located within.
Right.
Yeah. And the other thing is just the uniformity provision of the statute, you know, kind of, this, that regulation flies in the face. The statute kind of, kind of points towards you develop a unified code. You don't have the, well, the exception is, you know, if your name is Mike, you have a fifty-foot setback. If your name's Alan, it's a ten-foot setback. Um, so yeah, that's, this was, this, that was, that was part of the other reason why we dealt with that enforcement case and why this came out.
I'm sorry, can, can somebody mute again? I'm, I'm hearing the extra talking. I'm sorry.
So.
Thank you.
What are the ramifications to somebody who has existing structures thirty feet from the edge of their property? With the new regulation, are they now legally non-conforming?
Correct. They're legally non-conforming.
And what are the implications to having property that's legally non-conforming? What does that do to people?
Uh, well, if it's legally non-conforming, it's protect, protected under state statute.
Okay, so if you go to sell your house and the bank does uh property records checks, and they, they see that this said, now you're gonna have to mark all of those properties as legally non-conforming in their property record. That's a lot of houses, Mike.
Yeah, well.
Agreed that would have to be done?
Well, what would happen usually is the lender, uh, the, usually when they do their title search, the review, they may ask the questions of us and ask for an opinion letter at, before the time of closing, because that's, we do, we deal with that on a daily basis.
Okay, so you don't see that as a complication to worry about?
No.
Okay. I just think that's a sneaky thing to do to people, but okay.
All right.
I have an issue with that.
Just out of curiosity, what kind of questions are you getting from those uh, you know, in those situations before closing, when they ask for that letter? Are they asking for you to give an opinion as to whether that structure was existing non-conforming? Um, and is, is not an issue with regards to code?
Yeah, that, they, they go, they run the gambit of anything. They'll ask whether open violations, they'll ask whether it's, whether it conforms all applicable zoning regulations. Was it legally constructed under an, uh, under an old regulation? Yeah, they, they ask everything, and we usually, when we give them that, that opinion, that zoning opinion letter back, we're certifying to whatever, you know, the findings are, whether it's existing non-conforming. Uh, we've had a few that were, that were built without permits, and we've had to say, hey, we have no records of how it, it's, it's, it's non-conforming, but it was not legally constructed.
Good, thanks. So you, your office then is, it's routine to dig deep enough in the records to see when the lot was construed, to know that that house is legally non-conforming.
Yes.
Because you'll know. I mean, you've got pictures of all of this. You'll know.
I, I was just gonna say, we got aerial photographs to go on back to the thirties of the entire town.
Well.
Every. House?
No, go ahead. Holly?
Well, I said every single house?
Uh, a majority of the town in the, the nineteen fifty-two aerial is the entire town. The thirties, I think we have a majority of the panels. Um, so yeah, we have, we have a majority of the town aerial photographs, historical.
Oh, that is so cool. I didn't know that.
Yeah. Well, this sounds to me like something that's more complicated than it appears on its face. I just wanted to make sure somebody thought it through. I don't know. We'll have to talk sometime more about this, but I don't want to hold up anybody anymore. I thought it was worth talking about.
Okay.
Um, there is no sound ordinance in Simsbury, true?
That's correct.
Okay, good. You can't write them. I was part of that in West Hartford once. Can't be done. Just can't, I don't know how you do that. The agrotourism changes, one of the changes is it allows for, I'll call it daycare, like summer camp type things. Is that true?
So, s- summer camp is allowed, uh, day camp, summer camp, childcare camps, those are allowed in existing. One of the things we wanted to make sure we did not create Fleming Farm non-conforming from that, from that use.
Good. All right, that makes sense to me. Uh, I just wanted to ask about uh home occupations again, the, the new language is, what is it, home business or something?
Yeah, home, this is a home service-based business.
And isn't the thinking there to have the um business incidental to the property that's really a, a home for habitation? Okay?
That's correct.
So here we go. You know what's going. Okay, so what's incidental? Is it, as long as I, my business doesn't take up more than fifty percent of my floor space in the house?
So there's a limit on a quarter, uh, twenty-five percent in the, in the last revision. That was one thing that we discussed.
Okay, so is it twenty-five percent or a square footage or both, or just twenty-five?
It's, I think we just did the twenty-five percent.
Okay, is that include, go ahead.
No, go, you go.
Okay, does that include uh garages, basements, all that?
Capital space.
Just, okay. Um, so if I have a landscaping business and I have an office in my house, as long as it's incidental to my habitable space, it's okay. What if I store my equipment in a barn in the back of my house? And I've got tractors and lawnmowers and people fixing them back there. Is that considered?
So, one is uh hold on, let me find the two things here. Any material, merchandise, equipment, and machinery relatively used stored, stored outdoors must not be visible from adjacent properties or from the public right-of-way. So you have to store, everything's got to be stored indoors. Um, so they could, in theory, do that business, um, operating out of there. Um, we did discuss this with the zoning commission. I think you, you saw a few of the videos on that, Alan.
I did.
On the.
Yeah, I did.
The, the, yeah, the uh, the concept of whether it's okay or not. Um, and the commission, there was, there was some disagreement with that, so. Um, because, because, you know, the, the, the potential, those are, those are the uses that we had, we deal with from a home occupation enforcement standpoint. I think that's, out of all the enforcement cases I've, I've been in part with or been aware of during my tenure in Simsbury, it's been home occupations that are landscapers, et cetera, that outgrow the area that they're in. Um, but to get back to your question, the regs say shielded from view. Um, they, they, they also say that there's no exterior evidence from the business can be seen from the public right-of-way or budding, abutting properties. So the question is, you know, how much of a visual nuisance are you if you're running your business, your landscape business there? Like, like you said, are they, they're repairing everything out in the yard? Can't do it. You can't do it.
So I, I guess my question also was, there's no square footage limit to uh other buildings on the property. I mean, other than typical zoning regs, but I could have a five hundred square foot office, but still have two thousand square feet in a barn behind.
In theory, yeah.
And there are businesses that repair things unless somebody's trying to tell you it's a hobby. You can drive around and see boats and cars and front yards. You know where I mean. Okay, all right. Well, I wanted to know, I just, I just think that some limit on exterior buildings would be in order too.
So Mike, um, I, I do have a general question. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Throughout the, the plan of conservation and development, um, you know, we've created uh actions that various organizations or departments in town, we felt should take. Uh, and there are many of them uh that we said should be um led by the zoning commission. Was there a conscious review of the P O C D actions relative to the zoning commission in the context of the uh, the rewrite of the regs?
Well, this rewrite really was pushed for reorganization. Um, that, that was, that's really what pushed this project. Because the main thing is, we've had so many complaints about our regs, how confusing and disorganized they are. Then there was a few other, you know, as, as we first started with the reorg, um, there was a few other sections that caught people's attention, such as the home, home occupation regulations. Um, or other things that were related to legal uh cases that we had to address. Um, what I've like referenced earlier, so kind of evolved from there, and this is something, the zoning commission's been, discussion's been about the past year, eighteen months on this, on this thing. But, but like I said, the main focus was the re- reorganization, really, of the regs.
Okay, so you said there's an opportunity to um, to address the uh, the P A D after the reissuance of the uh reorganized uh regulations. Um, one of, one of the, one of the suggestions that I'm gonna uh offer to the, to the commission is that when we uh reply to, in our referral, I believe we should remind the zoning commission that uh, you know, there are several opportunities uh to draw from the, the P O C D uh and um amend or revise existing regulations. And if they haven't done that uh in, 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 in this go-round, that they, you know, they missed an opportunity.
That's a good idea, Bill. It's a good idea.
You know, we we laid it out, right? We had, and and I I get the sense that um, no, I didn't read, I didn't read the the proposed regulations verbatim yet. Uh, but I don't see the evidence of what's been uh, identified in the P O C D being reflected in the new regs.
Yeah, good point.
I can tell you that I watch a lot of meetings and I was on the zoning commission once and I never saw that subject come up. Except as a referral to get a vote from the planning commission so they could proceed.
Right, so we have to remind them.
Yep, we have to insist that uh.
Is it holding up a referral?
So.
Boy, I'm reluctant to do that.
Yeah, you, if you, if you do not, under statute, if you do not respond to the referral, no action is is taken as a positive referral.
Yeah.
That's statute.
So they get a, they get an approval if we don't vote.
And and remember, in your referral, what it triggers is if you send a negative referral to the planet, to the zoning commission, it triggers a majority vote on the application.
Hang on now, there's six members, a super majority and a majority is the exact same.
Yeah.
So it means, you know what this means, Holly? Nothing. It means if we give it a negative referral, they can just, I'm not saying they will, but they they can just ignore it.
Um, it is worth noting that uh, it should be, you know, there there should be some reply as to why, why blow it off.
You know what? I wonder if if we shouldn't, if not routinely, then at our discretion, send them a written document with our vote, why we voted a certain way, instead of having it just carried orally. Especially, in my mind, of all the things we do, this is the most important. I can't think of anything we do that's more important than than what we're talking about tonight. That's my opinion anyway. Um, and I wonder sometimes if we have some disagreements with something, we shouldn't say what they are instead of saying, because I I see people come out of D R B meetings and go to zoning and they ask, um, they ask the applicant, well, what did D R B say? And the applicant tells them. The applicant, that's not right, okay? The applicant, because I've seen meetings where they told the applicant, you know, we really, not lately, but we really don't like this, we really don't like that. And of course, he doesn't carry that over, you know? Uh, so I think sometimes that we should really look into writing a document and say, we had some issues with this, or we voted against this, or the negative votes were because of this. I I know it's more work and it probably falls on the secretary to at least.
But don't we always do that with our referrals? Don't we always?
No, we do not.
No.
We do not send any written documentation.
So the commission doesn't, but staff usually does a memorandum and 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 catches the meeting minutes.
Right.
On the applications when you have referrals.
That's absolutely.
But not the commission. I'm sorry.
But I think the commission that in those cases should at least have a copy of that.
I will do, I will share that with the commission moving forward.
I would like that. I, you know, is that what we said? You know, not to, I don't think we inclined to nitpick, but just to make sure, does that memorandum really, I trust you, Mike, but does that memorandum really capture the essence of our opinion? Especially for this.
All right, so um, I I I'm gonna, I'm gonna put together a statement before our next meeting to the effect that uh, um, I'm gonna really tone it down, or maybe I won't, you know, I'm just, I'm disappointed that the zoning commission didn't take the the opportunity to uh, review the P O C D. Uh, and specifically for those action items that have their their commission assigned to them.
Good for you, Bill. Good for you.
And Alan, if if you, if you want to uh, come up with some words about the, I think it's seven hundred and fifty feet, Mike, or did it change?
Eight.
Eight fifty.
Okay, so it says seven fifty in the proposed reg that's on the uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I may have said the wrong number, eight, seven fifty.
Oh, I feel better now.
Oh, yeah, it's all set now, Alan.
Bill, that's really good. We should do that, you know? You know what else we should do too? If they're gonna talk about the P A D, if we had some of us or all of us really go to work on the P O C D, really understand what we're talking about and meet with them prior to their discussion and say, you should know what we feel are are pertinent issues to the P O C D in the P A D. I, some of the new folks don't know all the letters and all that, but we can talk.
Yeah.
But the the plan there in development has some real problems and and being just described over at zoning as unintended consequences. They were consequences that were perfectly and reliably predicted by a lot of people before they happened. So I'm sorry, I interrupted somebody.
No, I thought we were supposed to get together with the zoning commission before they started the regs to talk about this. And and I know this, but this was before COVID. Um, a- and I thought everyone had agreed. I don't, am I, or is that, was that for something else?
I think we were gonna have it together now and then, but but I think to get together before they talk about the P A D.
Yeah, I thought we were supposed to do that before they started the regs or that we were supposed to, I thought, no, I thought, I thought we had talked about that.
We were gonna get together, have a joint uh, meeting between the two commissions, but COVID, we actually, we're gonna try to schedule something in uh, March.
Oh.
Courtesy of COVID, um, we, so maybe when, if life gets back normal. But I think Alan brings up a good point. I mean, if you want to send the the comment to the commission along with your referral to say, you know, we understand that you're gonna, they're look at the uh, P A D regs, we would like to be, have a joint meeting to discuss that before you start that work.
That means we are.
Yeah, well, that I, you're right, Alan. If you want to commit to it, I I I think you're right. You have to be prepared to to bring the P O C D and the applicable section of the P O C to the pad regs to have that conversation.
And I I would advocate for either, I don't know if we can make up a committee of interested people, if that's legal or or at least have a, have a special meeting and come prepared to say, when it comes to, let's make sure that everybody understands what the P A D is, okay? Talk about maybe what some of the problems have been and how does that uh, stack up against the P O C D? That I think either a special meeting of the group or a select committee or something should be prepared to do that.
I think it would be good to have a, a separate meeting so that the alternates could fully participate.
Yeah, you wanna workshop, yeah.
Workshop.
Workshop, there you go.
I agree, I agree. So honestly, honestly, let's look at each other in our little tiny two inch boxes here. How much difference does the P O C D make? Not a whole lot. Not a whole lot.
What do you mean, Alan?
I mean, it's the, when you look around and you see things being built that you like or don't like, people want to know, well, how did they allow that?
Right.
That isn't our job to allow things, but they want to, well, don't they plan for things like that? And honestly, do we? Do we really plan anything? No, we we have a document that gives guidance to the people that say yes or no to various projects, but that's all it is.
Well, Alan.
Attention, you don't have to.
I see what you're saying, you know, uh, and of course, the zoning regulations and subdivision regulations is the the effort to control and have development uh, be the way that at least we and the zoning commission uh, think it should be. And presumably the town people, because both reg, you know, both regulations have been adopted by town, by town meeting, right?
Uh, hopefully, yep.
Well, no, that's what happens. Whether anybody shows up or not, it's a different story.
The advantage, I'm sorry, but go ahead.
Yeah, and then then things creep in over time, like P A Ds and W H O Zs and you know, that that this is public policy, you know, uh, people trying, I'm sure there's a special interest behind it somewhere or other. Uh, so, yeah.
I just think we need to be heard, okay? And we won't be heard until we stand up on our back feet and just make some noise.
And I I think, I think this is the opportunity.
I do too.
So I'll, I'll, I'll break something up and send it to everybody and you guys can tell me if it, you know, uh, is, I'm gonna make it pointed, but I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna make it nasty or anything. Uh, but uh, for me, it would, it would be the basis of a of a negative referral.
Bill, I see no evidence that they consulted the P O C D in the meetings and the minutes I've read, I've never heard the P O C D mentioned except for the necessary referral uh, to us for their rebut, their revisions.
Bill, when you, when you prepare your uh, response, could you send it to me and I'll send it to the group so we're not having a meeting via email?
Okay, yep.
Makes sense. All right, so.
And and Mike, you know, I'm gonna trust you to keep it between this commission at this point, you know.
It's not going, it's not going public, just you.
Mike's not anxious for it to hit the fan.
Yeah.
Sooner than it has to.
Right, and then, yeah, then I'll, then I'll see Dave Ryan down at the Redstone and, you know, he won't buy me a beer anymore.
Well, yeah.
Okay, we do have, we do have other things on the agenda here. Okay, so um.
Thank you, everybody, for giving me so much time tonight. I I appreciate it.
Yeah, that was, that was excellent, Alan. Thank you. Um, so, but at our next meeting, we have to take action. So be prepared.
To do our homework.
Yes, yep. Okay, um, so the bottom line of that discussion is, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna take it up again um, at our next meeting. Continue to our next meeting. Okay, Mike, affordable housing plan, any update to report there?
No, you have, you have the draft that I shared with the commission. I'm still working on the the document. But I I ask if anyone has any comments or wants to make any corrections to it, please send them to me. I'll, I gladly will appreciate the input.
Yeah, and I didn't necessarily expect anything else today. Uh, you know, I think you committed to the the second meeting in May is having the next version of the draft. So, fine, okay. All right, then we have uh, one other item, um, the Board of Selectmen referral um, on the capital uh, improvement plan fiscal year twenty, is that twenty twenty-one or is it twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty, the calendar year twenty twenty-one?
No, twenty dash twenty.
Okay, right, fiscal year twenty slash twenty-one. Okay, so Mike, are you able to um, put that list up? I do it, but I don't have the ability to share my screen.
Hold on, I think I, look, I think I may still have the authority.
So the genesis of this was that finance is telling the Board of Selectmen how to uh, run their budget. Basically, that's my take on it, but.
They're looking for reductions.
Well, they aren't just saying reduce it by X dollars, they're telling them how. That's, there was a time when that was frowned upon, but I guess those days are over, but. Um, so they're looking for budget reductions and is that why we got this? Is because we have to approve to see if it's consistent with the P O C D, the capital budget?
That's correct. You have, that's the, the usual um, yearly exercise we go through for bond council.
Okay.
And I am going to try this. And hopefully, this is not gonna.
Oh, guess what? I can now share.
Is this the?
How's that?
Oh.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Yep.
But how do you look at this and know what's by dollars? How do you know what's consistent with the P O C D? Is it the writing at the bottom, the rink fencing and the utility van or something? Is that?
No, so it's gonna be all the stuff on the left-hand column, so network storage, soft bar body, armor, ash borer, uh, rink fencing, placecapes, feasibility study, all those things that are on the side.
Right, so not the dollars that we need to concern ourselves with.
It's the action.
Yeah, didn't it used to be that somebody from the town came and explained every one of these things?
Jeff Shay, Jeff Shay, years ago, yes, you're right. Jeff Shay used to present to you.
Yeah. Okay, so now's our opportunity to ask what these things are, if you want. Well, it's hard to look at any one of them and think it's not consistent with what color's this utility van? I mean, what are we gonna talk about, really?
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, is it electric?
Good, good.
Now, okay, realistically speaking, let's not uh, let's not rack our brains here.
I agree.
Okay, a lot of other people have looked at this. Uh, you know, and 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 certainly, I, I don't, I I don't, I think we'd be hard pressed to find anything that was uh, inconsistent with the P O C D.
Yeah, yeah. It's just a reality.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that to return a positive referral. Is this referral, yes, I need eight dash twenty-four. Okay, return a positive referral to uh, uh, like, what do we call this? The capital improvement plan fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Uh, finding it in uh, consistent with the twenty seventeen Simsbury Plan of Conservation and Development.
I'll second that.
Okay, Bill Rice made the motion. Alan uh, seconded any, any discussion. Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And I'll tell you what, but I didn't want to bring up the money uh, before the vote. That's a lot less than previous years.
It is.
You know, I'm like half. I don't, I don't see anything for roads or anything in here this time.
Well, the the letter said something about they're trying to go for a a flat mill rate.
Right.
Yep.
That you look in two or three years, it will be flat, but we may get away with it now.
Okay, great. Okay, uh, Mike, any correspondence or anything we need to be aware of?
Uh, well, one thing, one to be aware of, uh, so I have been kind of keeping this group apprised to the flood map updates. I found uh, the this afternoon that on May twenty-first, the new, the draft of flood insurance rate maps will be sent uh, electronically to all the farming and uh, watershed communities. So. And this was supposed to be released about a month ago.
Is your battery running down?
I found this out at two o'clock this afternoon.
Okay, Mike, can you hear us? You, you, it, it, your voice is coming through at like half speed and uh, you know, you haven't been drinking, have you?
It sounded like your battery was running down.
Right, like a robot that was running out of power.
I'm always being judderous, you sound drunk for the rest.
Yes. Do you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you. Now you're frozen, Mike. Now you're even closer.
See the tape of this.
All right, Mike, we're gonna have to cut you off at this point.
I'll, I'll try now. Okay, I have to, I have to like hunch over this, my computer.
Uh, it's, it's not your posture. It's, it's the technology. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead here and uh.
I want to check your bandwidth.
We can adjourn.
We can adjourn.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I second that.
Oh, wait, no. Who uh, who who made the motion?
Sorry.
Mike, you can't make the motion.
You can't even talk, Mike.
Holly, you made a motion to adjourn?
I second.
Aaron, Aaron seconded? Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, uh, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? We are adjourned.